Good afternoon, everyone. So I'm Mayor Adrian Petrella, and one of the things that we wanted to do more frequently is, you know, we're doing town halls for the different districts. And so also want to do a mayor's town hall since I represent all four districts in the whole city. Just to give you an idea of what some of the things are that we're working on, what we've worked on, and where are we going, just to give you some updates. One of the things that became painfully obvious in the last couple of weeks with all the meetings we've had about flooding, all the different things that we're, you know, talking about in the different areas of flooding when it's Boca Seaga, whether it's Belvesta, why it stals our places. Here's a list of all of the things that we've done on flooding just in the last six months. And what became painfully obvious was that while we are doing quite a few things to address and mitigate the issues, maybe one of the things that we can do better is actually communicate what we're doing. And so that was one of the things that I wanted to do today. So with that, I actually have Mike Clark, our public works director with us. Mike, you have a couple of things you want to talk about real quick? So Mike is just going to give us a quick brief overview of some of these things that we've addressed. And then if he's missed anything, I've got my list of all the things that I went back over the last few months at the different commission meetings.
Well, your honor.
And Mike, if you want to step back a little bit so that we can see you on the camera there.
Sorry, everybody. I was sensing some frustration. Awesome, exactly what you just said. And I think a lot of it stemmed from folks not really having perfect grasp of what our city.
For you, it's a start. You just don't have a clue what's on the paper. We need a copy of that.
There is no copy of the paper. I'll be talking about all the different things on the paper.
A copy of that would be very helpful.
So we are recording this, and so feel free to shoot me an email. I'll send you a copy.
No, I need it now.
Well, I'm sorry, we don't have this. These are just my notes. It's not an agenda, so.
Well, that's not very good.
I can't read you that because it's too small. So sixteen, but go ahead.
So your honor, I thought if I could take maybe ten minutes, I could bring everybody forward through time and reassure our audience, our citizens, that in fact, there's been a lot of attention paid towards what the future of St. Pete Beach is in terms of water threats.
Sounds good. Thanks, Mike.
You bet. So for the folks that I have not yet had the privilege of meeting, my name is Mike Clark, and I serve as, you know, public works director for the city. And I've been in this position about eight years now. And in that eight years, we have been working very hard on planning for what I think is a bit of an eventuality. Anybody familiar with the term sea level rise? Well, you can believe it or not believe it. It doesn't really matter. Or the causations, that doesn't really matter either. But I think what matters is your observations. And if your observations, as I understand it, are anywhere near correct, we're experiencing something now that we have not experienced very much of in the past, and that is sunny day flooding, higher flooding, more frequent flooding. Is that kind of like? Okay. In two thousand and twelve, the first stormwater master plan was developed. It's a weighty document I highly recommend it for about nine thirty at night because you won't make it to nine forty-five. In it is a guide, it's a guidebook. And it's called Stormwater because in two thousand and twelve, we weren't thinking sea level rise, and we weren't thinking flooding. We were thinking stormwater management. This document was updated once I got here in two thousand and nineteen. And we focused in on the recommendations and the foundation of this document. And then we created a list of high priority projects or projects in neighborhoods that were at that time presenting themselves to be the most problematic. As a result of that, I actually wrote a paper in two thousand and seventeen, and I presented it to the commission and the public. And it's the Stormwater Master Plan Implementation Recommendations. And so it's a more concise version of all of that, more digestible. So what should we be doing? Where should we be placing our capital, capital improvement money? And so I'm just going to give you a real quick education. And bear with me. So in nineteen ninety-one, we incorporated, we asked CPWG to actually produce this document. And as I said, we've updated it. And the as a result of those, the Stormwater Utility and Rates Study was created. So if you may remember, that was back in two thousand and ten-ish. And that rate study began to gather money that was going to go into the capital program and begin to do stormwater mitigation projects and improve things. Well, the first project actually didn't take place until two thousand and fifteen. And that was the Passageway Road Rehabilitation Project. Anybody remember that one? Phase one, phase two, lived through it. There is a lot of stormwater mitigation in those two road construction projects. All the streets south of Thirty Second all have tight check valves now. And the roads were at, the whole stormwater pipe system and inlets and everything were all redone in order to establish elevation to let the stormwater flow. So if you go down that road, you know, you kind of go up and down a little bit. Well, that's false elevation to get the stormwater to actually run to the inlet without sitting on the street. As we continue to progress through recognizing what was going on in the environment, I updated my plan in two thousand and twenty-one. And at that time, the at that time, it was, I was beginning to recognize that stormwater was shifting. It was no longer about just stormwater, the rain. I coined it, I called it water threats. So we have threats. So and I recommended, these are my recommendations, that we re-scope our stormwater master plans into a comprehensive threat protection strategy. And the analysis should center on to the threats to the island, including transportation, mobility, egress and access, which is street flooding, critical infrastructure protection for access and operations, and private property preservation for economic stability. The arrival of the water threats to the island is threefold. We have the Gulf, we have the bay, and we have precipitation. And the sources of those waters are stormatic activity, tidal activity, and sea level rise. And so what we did, in short, is the commission authorized a study for the entire island. And so what we did is I brought together four different engineering firms, not just one. And that's highly unusual. Because if you put your, if you put your project into the hands of one engineer, all you're going to get is a senior project manager and a couple of guys or gals who are going to study this thing. If you hire four and you go in geographical representations, topography based for the island, you expand your footprint of knowledge that you're receiving to about twenty different engineers. Okay? So that was the philosophy. I ran the show. I gave the scope of work to everybody, and I told everybody exactly what the parameters of the study would be, following my recommendations and my update one. And so we received a lot of information. And basically, what these four reports do is they charted the way forward for what we were going to begin to do, recognizing that no one project by itself was really going to help us out. It would help out a particular street. It would help out a particular neighborhood. But my job is to help the city. And so parallel to that, the state kind of got into the game, and Tampa Bay region got into the game, and all the other public works directors got into the game. Everybody started going, oh, yeah, yeah, we need to start doing this. And so the state brought out a vulnerability requirement. So we have to, municipalities have to do a study by state standards called a vulnerability analysis. And what it does is really what I already did in my recommendations on phase one, threats to mobility, threats to economic stability, and threats to the neighborhoods. And so there's recommendations in here that mirror the recommendations. And so you're seeing a thread that is consistent through all of the studies that would have been done in the last twenty years. In addition to that, we picked off a couple of specific neighborhoods. And one of the things I was particularly interested in across the city was the seawalls. The city owns about fifty-four seawalls. And the code was set following that to have a cap elevation of five feet. North American vertical dating of the year nineteen eighty-eight. So five feet is from a space in the ground that all the surveyors agree that is zero. It has nothing to do with the tide. It has nothing to do with the elevation of the water. And all it has to do is survey. Most of the seawalls in this city are between two point five and four feet. Very few seawalls are at five. The Passageway seawall that we're working on just happens to be very, very close to five. I don't know how that happened, but it is, and it's good. So that's why you're not seeing a profound elevation for that seawall. And so this basically tells us where our vulnerability for high water threats through our seawalls is at. So we can take a look at whether or not we're threatened in a situation for evacuation. The Bayway gets cut off, Seventy Fifth Avenue gets cut off. And we lose those two points. Treasure Island, it's not an evacuation route. And so what are we going to do? In addition to all of this, we commissioned a study on what most people agree is the most low-lying neighborhood in the city, which is the Doncet, is our neighborhood. And so we commissioned a study in two thousand and twenty. And we said, hey, we're going to be looking at putting up a seawall around the entire neighborhood. And we're going to need some pump stations to evacuate the stormwater. We think Lido Park is a good place. We took a look at that and said, hey, you know, perhaps we can do better because the cost on that was pretty extreme. It was in excess of fifty million dollars. So we said, we can do better. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we commissioned a second study, a review, and we did better. The pump stations are now programmed to be on the perimeter of the maritime road network that surrounds that. And in addition to that, we have picked off a whole lot of stormwater improvement projects. I know the mayor's got his list up, but the two of our lists match up pretty good because mine goes back to two thousand and twenty. And a single space type, each one of those is a different project. About six of them or so are in design or in construction at this point. Every one of these projects comes from recommendations from this entire body of knowledge. The plan moving forward, really, in concept, we don't have a lot of choices. We are a barrier island. Not much we're going to do on the Gulf. Beach nourishment projects are good. Those are beach test, that's resiliency, and they're going to five feet and it'll be the eighty-eight. But that's not something that we really have a lot of control over. I know the mayor's really working hard with the county. We've seen some success, and that's great. It's that bay out there. That's our threat. And it's the bay out there at the same time it's raining very, very hard. Those two types of water collide. The high tide water is going to back up over the seawalls or through the inlets, and the stormwater is going to stall on the sand. It's all going to sit right there on the street. So we did a study of all the streets in the city. We know exactly where the water will be on certain storm profile, how deep it will be in the intersection itself. It ranges from about twenty inches to nine inches. Those are the ones I focused in on because nine inches, you can still crawl through it and get out. But most vehicles at twenty, you're stuck. You're going to drown, and your car's going to stall, and you're in the middle of an intersection full of water. Those intersections and the surrounding areas are where we're really taking a hard look at protecting so we can keep those avenues of egress open during high storm events. Because as we know, how everybody evacuates, and when you decide to evacuate, and it's too late, you're stuck, and we're not coming to get you. And so we need to know where these vulnerabilities are. That's the vulnerability analysis. And so I think what I'll conclude with real quick is just a fast list. So just ride with me. Boca Seaga Isle Drive Stormwater Improvements, and we're doing a new check valve design. My design that I thought of it, we're going to improve that check valve on the west end, east end. Our engineers are down there at the Sacramento. Belvesta, Lido Avenue Forty-Fifth Stormwater Pump Station Design is in design right now. It is not funded for construction yet. Belvesta Avenue Forty First Avenue, we did some stormwater improvements, that tie check valve. There may not be working every single time of high tide, so we're going to go retrofit that tie check valve. We created a tie check valve vault in order to protect the tie check valves from marine growth and debris. And so we're redesigning many of the check valves that we have already put in place in the last ten years in order to provide protection for them. All of us public work directors are all realizing the same thing, that the tie check valves that we are installing are not really great in a marine environment. So we have to change the environment in order to make those things operate better because I haven't come up with an idea to replace those yet. So Belvesta Avenue Triangle Park received a stormwater project, Passageway Road Rehabilitation, Phase One, Phase Two. The seawall down there, Phase One, Phase Two will be happening in the year twenty-seven. The new nourishments we talked about, we have a replacement for the Twenty-Ninth Avenue seawall that was just approved by the commission yesterday. We talked about the Doncet is our neighborhood threats concept plans, phases one, phase two. The Thirty-Sixth Avenue seawall is going to get replaced with street re-surfacing, tie check valve involved in the baffle box. In many locations, we're learning that we also have to modify the street profile and the stormwater inlet pipes so that we can direct the water at the proper pipe elevation so that we can get it out. And we have a very flat island, and sometimes our profiles on our pipes are very, very slight, maybe two percent. And that's not really what we want. We'd like to have more. But we can't get it. And so we're just going to have to live before we can get it. We have nine locations in the Doncet is our neighborhood that are either, have either received a stormwater structure that's going to be rehabilitated or that new stormwater structure will go in at the new design standards. The first pump station design concept will be incorporated into one of those locations as we think our way through to the eventuality of having to raise the seawalls and install six pump stations around that entire neighborhood. And all that includes tie check valves and baffle boxes. We have ongoing right now, a public-private partnership for the design of a five thousand feet of living shoreline in the Doncet is our neighborhood. So we're going to have to work on our code to allow that shoreline to actually be constructed. And we're coordinating with the FDOT of Barcelona and Granada to, they called me up and says, Mike, we saw your design. We think we want to use it. Can you give it to us? And you want to put that in Granada, Barcelona? And they're going to do that. And I'm hoping they're going to do that this year. We also kind of mess with the pavement outside. Those of you that are out the windows, you can see there's a black stripe of pavement right up against the curb here at the parking area. That's permeable asphalt, and there's a rock chamber underneath it. So the water, the rainwater that used to flow into the curb, it just kind of sit there for a while. Now it no longer does that. It flows through the asphalt, goes into the rock chamber, disappears. And so all the ladies and men, sandals, so your socks don't get let anymore go on. We also extended the permeable pavement. I did a base street, and it has been working very, very well. It's a unique street because it's not a crown. It's an invert. So we ran the permeable pavement rock chamber right down the center. And we connected that to the already existing inlets in order to allow everything to flow a little bit nicer. We're going to extend that very same to the El Centro or the El Centro Avenue there, between Thirty Fifth and Thirty Seventh Avenues. So let's see here. I think I hit pretty much everything. We've got some future concept designs that are on the table. Hermosita Avenue, Fifty-Ninth Avenue, being at Del Mar Boulevard, Sunset Way. And following up on, on pump station ideas, all the seawalls in the city in general are going to have to come up. And when they come up, we're going to trap stormwater. We're also going to have some issues about stormwater behind my seawall on my particular property. There's a whole bunch of solutions to that, too. So let's not panic too soon. There are one hundred and seventy-five distinct watershed basins in the city, topographically. We're looking at combining a grouping stormwater basins in order to form a pump station basin so that we can reduce the number of pump stations because these puppies cost three to four, five million bucks apiece. We have to restructure the road surface to redirect the water. But basically, we bring this, the idea is that we bring the seawalls up, and then we have a pump station that's integrated to a neighborhood network. And then we evacuate the water in multiple neighborhoods around the city. The first area we're looking at next is the Seventy-Sixth to Eightieth Avenue Neighborhood between Gulf Boulevard and the Bay. I had a half a dozen others that I'm thinking about, but as we extend these concepts throughout the city, I believe that that is our future for the next thirty years. So your honor.
Thank you, Mike.
Almost ten minutes.
Let's hold the questions to the end so we can get through all the, all the updates. And as thorough as Mike was, he doesn't give himself enough credit because he actually missed about at least half a dozen, dozen things that I have on my list that he doesn't have. So as part of the resiliency and hardening that we're doing, we're also working on the underground projects for Gulf Boulevard. But so we're now almost all the way down to Fourteenth. By the bottom. We're, we're well audiences, right? So that's one of the things that we're doing. The other thing that Mike mentioned is, you know, we did the new restoration last year. Now we're doing Beechwood Mary from down at the past. And hopefully at some point, we can get to Elton Park as well. Seawalls, Mike has worked, you know, quite a few seawall projects. He's got several in Passageway. He's got one in Doncet is our neighborhood. The one he didn't mention was Coran Park. That's another one point five million dollars that we had a matching grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah. Yeah, it's just another million and a half dollars. We're also, one of the things that we discovered as we're looking at, you know, you know, our storm drains, who's cleaning them, how frequently are they getting cleaned? So, you know, last night during our budget discussion, you know, Mike said, look, we'd like to have at least one, one to one point five, you know, full-time or part-time individual to help us in public work so that we can be more, have a better schedule, a better handle on getting the storm drains cleaned as well. So we're hiring more staff in that area as well. Pump station, one rehabilitation, rehabilitation, that's another one point four million dollars. Forty-Fifth Avenue Stormwater Improvement. One of the other things that we did, so some of these projects are things that can help out in this coming storm season, right? Just in the next ninety to one hundred and eighty days. So that's what we look at. You know, can we get a schedule for the stormwater drain cleans? Can we have more staff for that? Then there are projects that we're looking at that are, you know, six months to a year out. So those are some of the seawalls that we're working on right now. You know, some of the pump stations, some of the outfalls and so on. So those are all things that are in the immediate to near future within the next year. And then we have the long-term plans, right? So we've got quite a number, like Mike said, about a half a dozen or so in different design phases that we're working on. And these are all projects that will happen in the next, you know, one to three years. And then also looking much further down the line, one of the two things that we did is, so we updated our ordinance for seawalls to make sure that all seawalls going forward are going to be at five feet. Right? So this is not going to have an immediate effect, but what it will do is, as the life expectancy of these seawalls comes to an end, and they need to be replaced, over time, all of the seawalls will have to be at this new level. Right? So that's going to take, you know, fifteen, twenty years. I mean, if you just redid your seawall a couple of years ago, you're not going to do it for another twelve years. But over time, that is going to help. The other thing that we did is, as we looked at our ordinances and building codes, so we looked at, you know, what happens if you want to renovate your house? What happens if you want to build a new house? So those are some of the things that we updated just in the last year to make sure that if we're building new houses, they're much more resilient. They're much more, you know, resistant to stormwater and to high tides and to, if we have a hurricane. So those are just some of the things that we worked on, on resilience. The other thing I'll do is just give you a quick few updates of some of the things that we've worked on the last six months. And I'm going to focus specifically on, I like to call quality of life issues, right? I mean, we did a lot of things that I didn't touch upon. We renegotiate a fireman's contract, retirement contract. So those are all things that the city has to be. But I want to specifically focus on the projects that we're working that will directly affect our residents in their day-to-day lives. One of the things that we're working on right now is, and we're just about this far from getting it done, is our updating our beach ordinances. And so we've had almost three years of workshops and working with the beach stewardship committee, committee with the commission. And so we're just in the very, very final phases to getting that, you know, handled and just worked out the final language. And hopefully the next two or three months or so, we'll have a completely updated beach ordinance that we can implement. If you remember last year, toward the end of the year, one of the things that we did is, we worked with the Quarry Avenue Business Association to have a new vendor for the quarry market, for the sunny market. From everything that I've seen, it's been working amazing. The last, the number of vendors is up. Attendance is up. As you probably seen, parking is down. Well, the number of parking spots available. So we also do have two additional parking spots at the end of Quarry Avenue, just next to the place we won't mention. Right? So there's, there's additional parking that the commission has approved so that we have additional parking for Quarry Avenue, especially on the weekends and Sundays and holidays. We had two huge projects that we were working on for Gulf Winds and for Boca Seaga Drive. I'm sure this is actually work for Mike, but one of the things that we asked the public works to do is go back to the drawing board with those projects because many of our residents felt like they were too invasive. The sidewalks were too large, were losing bike lanes. And so the request of the commission was, and this was brought to the commission, both of these projects, and they've gone back into a redesign phase to see if we can work something out where we maintain the roads. Again, if you look at Gulf Winds, if you look at Boca Seaga Drive, if you live on those roads, sorry, I drive it almost every single day, and they're absolute, I mean, they're beyond the point where they need to be repaid. But at the same time, you know, we don't want to just repaint them. You know, we want to make sure that when we, when we do something, that we do it as good as we can. And so with that in mind, you know, we want to make sure that we have roads, that we have, you know, bike lanes, and we also have good pedestrian sidewalks so that we can move, whether it's bicycles or cars, you're on foot. So both of those will be, are in the redesign phase right now. So we'll be coming back to the commission in the next few months. So both of those will be are in the redesign phase right now. So we'll be coming back to the commission here in the next few months. Alright. So we've got. This is what we've worked on. So I want to give you an idea of kind of what we're working on the next. The next few months through the end of this year. So I'm very excited. In two weeks, our new city manager will be here with us. You know, she's, it's not a thing that she's gonna have to work. That she will have to work on. It's a lot of things. For her to get caught up with. I know she's been working with Wayne, our interim city manager, for the last few months on a weekly basis. Just to make sure that she's caught up. I know I'm very excited for her to start. And meet her next week again. And we'll talk about, you know, some of the, you know, priorities for the next six months for the next year or so. We're also in the middle of our budget discussions right now for the city. So by statute, we have to have. Our budget wrapped up by by September. So right now, one of the things that the commission is looking at is. You know, where are our priorities for next year financially? You know, what projects we're gonna tackle? You know, part of that is some of the resiliency projects that Mike mentioned. Some of them will be this year, some of them will be next year, some of them we're planning for the years to come. So that's one of the things I've worked on right now is the city budget. Another big project. And this was kind of, some of these you'll see that we've left them. Where the new city manager can help us tackle them. Right? So one of the other things that we're looking at is a review of our comprehensive plan. You know, particularly when it comes to, you know, high density development and so on. And we'll be combining that with. Community involvement. We'll have workshops where the public can participate. We'll do studies and surveys. And so we want to make sure that all our residents are involved in that process so that we can together determine. You know, what we want the future of this town to look like. So that's one of the big projects that we're working on in the next couple of months. As Amber has reminded us at every commission meeting for the last few weeks, we do have a special election that's happening in August. If you go to the city's website. Pops right up. One of those nineties pop up. And also if you go to the city commission dropdown, you'll see all the information. So if you want absentee ballot information is there, we're having to see that. And what the deadlines are for when it goes in. And then we'll have the polling place August twentieth. So we'll have that special election. Let's see. So the other big project that we're working on right now, in particular for Passer Grill, so we're. In the design phase right now for the new fire station that will be there. So that's a long term project, but we just approved the resigned budget for that. So we're working on that. A couple more. Smaller, but more immediate things is we've got our big Fourth of July celebration on Thursday at Coran Park. And then when we have additional resources also available for all of our residents for hurricane season as well. So those are available at Mark Worthy, sorry. The hurricane resources are available on the website and there's a, there's harbor lot of facilities available at the fire station. Let's see. Alright, and then one of the other things that we discussed briefly last night. I know I've received a lot of emails, phone calls and text messages about the different parking situations that we have around the city. And particularly on the weekends, you know, whether it's in Passer Grill, whether it's on forty sixth Avenue, forty ninth Avenue. You know, across from from Upton Beach, that neighborhood. So we've, we're gonna work with the sheriff and allocate some additional resources on the weekend. To make sure that, you know, we have good parking enforcement, that, you know, people aren't blocking the driveway. Fire hydrants, the mailboxes, the curbs and corners and so on. And then maybe one of the things that, well, maybe. One of the things that I would like to do in the, well, I'll bring this to the commission, probably in the fall is. Maybe doing an overall citywide parking analysis or study with service from our residents that we can determine. So we can better determine, you know, where should we have resident only parking? Right? And so the, like Passer Grill, for example, like you're across from Upton Beach, for example, where you have. Parking permits for residents only. And where residents. Feel that they just want to have wide open parking and you just deal with it as it comes, right? So that's one things that I think for the longevity and for the future, we should look at much more detail and have a, you know, comprehensive. Parking plan so that we can know, okay, here where you can park as a resident, usually you get your parking permits. So that we make sure that when you come home, you have a place you can park your car. Not everybody has a driveway. Not everybody has a garage. So we need to make sure that we're mindful of that. And we also prioritize, you know, quality of. Again, life for our residents so that, again, when you come home, you have a place where you can park. So those are some of the items that we're working on. Those are some of the items that we're working on in the next couple of months. And what I wanted to do with the remainder of the time is to just open up for questions and answer. And I will do my very best to give you a straightforward answers. I can't, you're not gonna get any ability speak from me. So with that, just raise your hand. I'll just call you one at a time. Joe, go ahead.
Actually, my question is. I I just want to make sure I didn't miss it. Replace the vault check ground.
Yes, sir.
This is, I guess, for Mike too.
I'm just gonna go home and let Mike come up here and he can handle the rest of the meeting.
He kind of has to live with it. A five foot seawall.
Right.
Is that a minimum you have to do? You can go above that.
Yes.
To some extent. If I put in a five foot seawall, can I fill in behind you? To raise my property up to that level?
No.
Why not?
So. We need, we had multiple, multiple hours of discussion. What do we call that workshop for him, remember? Anyway, there, I just saw it earlier today. So part of the issue is. If all the houses are at this level, right? And you raise yours up. Where's the water going? It's going, it's going, it's going to your neighbor's yard.
It goes back to his flood drainage study that he did. Where does the water go? He knows where it goes.
Well, this.
I raise my property.
Yeah.
It's not, the water doesn't flow across my property to get into anybody else. I have two brick walls existing. So anything on my property stays on my property. People on the other side, it stays on their side. Why can't I elevate mine? Or why can't I put in retaining walls?
Yeah. So that is the city ordinance that we have right now because. In ninety nine point nine percent of those scenarios, the water will not stay on your properties. It will go to your neighbor and flood your neighbor's house. And so that's one of the reasons why you cannot elevate your base level elevation of the house.
And if you're looking at. The address of all the things you're talking about, a lot better. Method. And it looks at longer. I mean, you're starting to look at, I don't know how far out you're looking to go. But they're talking about in your center, what their plan is.
Absolutely. Yeah. So we have. The plans that we're looking at, some of them are, you know, ten, twenty, twenty five, thirty, fifty years old. So I'm not familiar intimately with what Treasure Island is doing. But I mean, I can tell you that, you know, speaking with Mike. You know, him and all the other public works director with every other municipality in the county, they're all talking about what solutions they're coming up. Because we all have similar problems. And so they're trying one thing. He might mention two things that he's innovated himself, for example. But we're gonna be the guinea pig for the county and the other cities. And if it works with us, they're gonna, you wouldn't have to give them that design statement as well. Go ahead.
So with the seawall issue, there's two types of the water. So when you're elevating your seawall, sometimes you're protecting yourself from the potential flood coming over top of your seawall. So but there's the others. The other water is the rainwater flows through your property. So if you elevate your property. Then the rainwater is going into your neighbors. That's the part of it still. So if you elevate your seawall, it don't fill behind it. Now you've got the rainwater issue because you don't put the bathtub because water needs to go all over the edge. Okay, great. You can put one way check bounce, weed poles into your seawall. You can take some of your yard and create rain gardens, rock gardens. You can create more of a surface. You can do the calculations of the twenty five years on the power storm. You can calculate the body, the gallons involved, cheap yards, cheap, beautiful, falling property. And through these other mitigation strategies, you can create slow water retention on your property. For those of you that have asphalt pavements that depends on what you really did back in the sixties. Might want to rethink that.
Thank you, Mike. Dana? I'll give you one and it will take a turn and then come back to you.
So this is a quick one. We just said our new seawall and say twenty twenty. What's the difference in how I got out of code was then? What's the difference between now and what it was in twenty twenty?
I can go back and look into the design that you seawalls, that guy did. There's gonna be another one there, so you can't.
I thought maybe you knew what that code was. We did remember code. Okay. And then so.
That was a question for Mike. We'll come back as we're looking here.
Then for you, first of all, I say thank you very much for being wonderful. Yes, I did vote for you and I appreciate you looking out for residents' rights.
Thank you for the support.
With that being said, you are only one vote and I know that.
Yeah.
But today. This is, gets me so crazy. I'm ready to go to Tallahassee because it's about, I think, the twenty eighteen law that was passed about. Who owns the beach? A resident got kicked off of trade winds. The sheriff said, you have to be in the water. And it just makes me crazy. So what are we able to do about this?
Yeah, I I got that same call from the resident while the sheriff's sheriff's. Deputies were all there because there were. Multiple trade employees, multiple sheriff's deputies were there. There's a family with kids and everybody else on the beach. I'm gonna. So I, when I spoke with the deputies, I tried to speak with the employees of the trade winds. And then after I left, I placed a call to the city attorney. We then placed a call to the trade winds and to their attorney. So for the time being, I'm going to. Let them work on that and I won't comment much more on that and say that. I don't think it's a particularly neighborly attitude. I think it's an unfortunate situation. And we've received. Probably three or four different. You know, calls like this about this particular property of the last year or so. Yeah. So for for tonight, I will, I will leave it at that just because I've already passed it off as a city attorney. But I have. I have a chat with Wayne about it as well and. Yeah.
You know, Mayor, right, I occurred. We did. Speak with Terry Minz, the attorney. I directly spoke with the sheriff. Get me to bear one of them. There's. As usual, two or three stories on exactly what happened. I think it was probably a girl story. What happened, this is what you know. But we are getting to the bottom of it pretty quickly. Mayor, I think you put your correct fish point.
Yeah.
Well, Chris, where is the line at? Does anybody, can anybody tell us?
In the water.
I think so. I'm being serious as well. At at this point, again, we have. You know, there's an agreement with that property, right? So the line is different from where it would normally be. And so for the time being, I'm just gonna ask for your patience. Allow us to work it out with the city attorney, the city manager and their attorney. And then we'll have an update on this. Yeah. Do you have a question?
No. Well, I guess my question is this. If you go all the way down to the dolphin. That's a simple stop. And then you come all the way up to the postcard inn.
Right.
What's to stop those properties from doing what the trade winds look like? In other words, reducing our beach access to bookends. And not to mention, all of the general public comes down here to the beach.
Yeah.
Nothing is the answer to that question unless we do something about being thrown off the beach like what, if, for example, what happened.
Yeah. Well, there's, it'd be very difficult for them to all combine. Because you have private condos in between them.
Just a couple.
There's a couple, yeah. I'm just saying it's. Yeah, I'm not, I'm telling you, it's, it's.
No, no, I'm just saying.
There's, there's five or six different condos in between there. Again, I think this is an issue that we need to. Address, not just with this individual property, but with all of the properties. And there's some additional conversations we've had. At the commission, talking about customary use, for example. And maybe that's something we need to revisit. That's also part of the purpose. Of the beach ordinance that we're working on is to reduce the amount of clutter. Right? So the amount of umbrellas and chairs and cabanas and so on. So that we have a more. Well, a less densely occupied beach, right?
So that ordinance then would be applied also to the resorts? Or would that just apply to the public bringing?
No, that is specifically to the resorts, right? So the public can't leave their chairs out of it. The public can't leave their cabanas or they can't have their tents and umbrellas there. Right? So our beaches technically close at sundown, right? Well, the beach ordinance specifically addresses the resorts and the hotels. Yes. Yes.
I'm a resident or in City Beach, but I'm also, the last year and a half, so a three D driver. And so some of you may recognize me. But I paid a little attention to some of the challenges with tipping. And for my agenda, maybe. Something that shouldn't happen to the day, I'm not sure, but I I paid attention in my break today. I listened to. The meeting from last night. And so I just wanted to, I don't know if this will be an open conversation. I'm not sure if you've had a conversation before, but I just want to make some comments about. Three D and the tipping and any of this stuff, just all of that in general. And I was. Myself, I was a former district manager with Fortune one hundred company at sales reps. Things of that nature. So I know the characterization of having good people work for you. But. So the background on three D and the people that work for three D drivers. There's. Retired police officers, retired stewardesses, veterans. Overall, the three D team, the drivers are phenomenal. Do a great job. And I know that the question came up last night's meeting about, you know, is tipping allowed? Is it not allowed? When I first came aboard, I asked that question, you know, they said, yes, tipping is allowed. But it's very, very discreet. It's never mentioned. If a person asks, we're told, so I. Asked that tips are are allowed. I say, yes, they are. Or people say, is this a tipping thing? I say, you know. Just like any place else, if a person wants to tip, they tip. We don't take them on that. But. Little bit of wage came up, I think, in the meeting yesterday. My wife is finance and HR for a local city nearby. And you want to make sure you hire and keep retaining people and wages and a lot of other benefits, etc. I know that as a driver, as a three D driver. The starting wage is less than what McDonald's starts their wages. It's less than Dunkin' Donuts wage goes. So I think you get what you get when you pay time, what you pay people, etc. I can just tell you that. I also work Sunday morning at Passer Grill. At that Paris Grill. And there's a tip jar out front. And we never say, hey, would you like a tip or whatever? And when you give someone a receipt, because it's mostly paid in. Credit cards. You give that card and you say, you know, if you fill out that top page, you know, that. Your top copy for all of us. Because I don't, you know, apparently it's real, all the tips are shared within the house. So you're saying, hey, would you like to, you know, could you fill out the top copy for all of us? You don't think they were tipped? And sometimes people tip, sometimes they don't. They don't. I don't tell them, hey, we're making eleven dollars an hour or whatever. So at the end of the day, it's a great crew there and you make. I make more money there on Sunday morning than I do guys free. Yeah. So I guess I say my thing is be careful what you wish for. If you say, hey, tips aren't allowed. My personal thinking, you'll, you'll go. The quality of driver will go down tremendously with the challenge from personal, I, fourteen dollars an hour. I, I personally would do something different. I just wouldn't. And I will tell you this, that. The bus driver, the driver of Pallas County, your guys that are parking enforcement, they make a lot more than three D drivers. I would tell you in my job, even when I'm riding people around, they say, well, this is a great job. This must be a great job. It is a great job, but it's also very challenging. I mean, there's danger around every corner. You're driving a vehicle, you're only going twenty five miles an hour. You've, you've got residents, you've got sheriffs, you've got everybody. They're driving all around you. I can tell you, I drive defensively. I would have gotten in a few accidents because of other people's fault if I wasn't being really careful. You, you know, you've got to be a really good person, really good at what you do. And you've got to be that ambassador for the city. I dropped someone off today. Just a real quick story. I apologize for talking long, but. I picked him up at train lines. They wanted to go to Co Cheesy and they said, you know, there's some other place else. um I picked them up at Trade Winds, they wanted to go to Cocheese, and uh they said, you know, is there some other place else we should go? And I said, well, I mean, why do you wanna go to Cocheese? And they said, well, just tell us, if they're better, would you, would you go there? I said, honestly, if I were you, I'd go down to Passit Grill, we'd go down to Passit Grill, and I told them all the things, they went, could you take us there? I'm like, yeah, let's go to Passit Grill. And I'm not trying to, to take business away from Cocheese, but we had a nice long discussion, we talked about all the benefits of Passit Grill, Brass Monkey, what they, you know, everything under the sun, tips never came up um at all, and when he got off, he says, you know, Ricky, I really appreciate you, you give him, I was good at tipping, five dollars. He said, I wanna give you ten dollars, and man, the difference you gave me was incredible. Uh but just the things that go into the whole idea of being a freebie driver and being that ambassador for the city. Uh I think you've got some really quality people working for freebie. I think I'm afraid that if you took tips out of the equation, period. Uh I think you lose a brilliant people, and the quality of the driver will go down, and your services go down, and um there's just a lot of choices that everybody has, you know, and what they do, how they spend, build their time, so. Just my thoughts and my here above that whole equation.
And I, and I, I appreciate that, and so I'll take thirty seconds to summarize what I said last night. And the whole thing started with the way that the freebie service was pitched to us. Because if I actually had a conversation with the other providers who were going to bid on the project, but ended up not bidding on the project for whatever reason. And the way it was pitched it was, was that we're gonna charge you a higher rate so that your passengers don't have to worry about tipping. And the conversations come up multiple times because the contract specifically says you are not allowed to accept tips. So if your employer told you, the freebie said in your interview, oh, yes, you can take tips. Maybe that's a conversation now we need to have with the city manager and say, why are you telling people something in the front end that you know isn't necessarily accurate? Right? And I, and, and I hundred percent agree with your sentiment. I really do. I'm just explaining to you how it was pitched to the city, and then it is my responsibility as mayor and the commissions as well is to make sure that we're good stewards of the contracts that we have. And our contract says one thing, if it needs to say a different thing, then we can look at that as well, but right now, as it stands, this is what the contract says. And the conversation came up, not because, you know, we want to shut down tipping, but rather because, again, it's the one bad apple situation, right? One person starts getting really aggressive with their tips, and their tip jars, and their Venmo sign, and I have, I have, you're right. And so now that's way beyond, you know, hey, you did a great service, here's a tip, and you say, hey, thank you, whatever. That's not what we're talking about. And so because of that, now we have to go back to our contract and say, hey, what does the contract say? What does it look? And then our residents now getting, or even visitors here, are getting one-star ratings because people are, because drivers are knocking their rating down because it didn't get a tip, as a signal to all the other drivers, hey, don't take out this person because they don't tip. Right? And so, again, I just, I, 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 I agree with your sentiment. Where we are today is either we have to enforce the contract as it is because of the one bad apple situation, or we need to look at.
Yeah, I heard this morning about that situation. I heard that someone could type one out of all detail, and you know, it, it must, it's obviously true, because I think there's evidence to be true. And uh that's, the section, I mean, it's not just that, it's embarrassing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's embarrassing, and uh we do have the ability to put stars, one through five, and then you can put notes at the driver. Um in my year and a half of driving freebie, I've never done anything more than five. It's just, it's just five, five, five. I don't care if you're drunk, I don't care if you're belligerent. I'm just saying five, and I, I, I'm on my way to the next ride, so. And by the way, rarely, people ask me, you know, if you get drunk, some things of that nature. Um I've never had a person ever within a freebie car that was belligerent ever. If there, if someone was intoxicated, they've always been in a great mood, and it's just, maybe it's the fact that you get done at midnight instead of two in the morning.
Right.
Yeah, it, it, it is, it is a fun job.
No, and I, and I, and I appreciate, again, I, I, I'm a frequent user of the freebie. So I've met, you know, several of the drivers.
You've seen you a couple of guys.
Yeah, I generally don't announce myself, although I'm sure somebody will put in the notes at some point. But anyway, let me, I will take a couple more questions before we wrap it up. Dr. Linda, go ahead.
There's a kind of a question, if you say, for Mike. Uh I have no intentions about my abilities each year. I do everything, but I don't do many of it. I fortunately lived through the last storms, the last year, that were not planned at all. And your statement about the uh the bay, the bay, the coastal being high, that's not true. The intercoastal was low, and everything was still backed up behind the sea walls. What we've done is the same system they did on Venus Island twenty years ago, and it failed miserably, and we're failing miserably in the sixties to the end now. I'm so sorry to teach you that, but it's reality. That's what I lived through this last two storms. It was totally wrong to believe that it's because the sea wall, the, the intercoastal is high, the intercoastal was low, and we were still flooded. All of the floods up in the streets, I mean, on twenty-eight thousand, everything was behind the sea wall, or pumps are not bringing up. So the only thing they did on Venus Island, we don't have enough capacity. There you go.
Go ahead. Scott, it's like to, in general, although any of the studies that you did, Mike, are they available to us to look at on your site?
Exactly.
I believe that may have a bar, I can work with bar office, uh let's get going here, it's your check for this twenty-dollar library.
Yeah, that would, a library of what you've studied, you don't know how, because I'm like, I like reading through the shop.
Yeah, I got locked out, too, because I don't think that I knew just exactly how, and this is not all of them.
Yeah.
So I think uh, you're looking for some, that time, are you?
How many do you do, really? I think it'd be, it'd be helpful, and again, this is all part of the, and I, I'll give Mark credit for this, because this meeting tonight was one of his initiatives as public information officer. Just in, in the overall, making sure that we do a better job in communicating with our residents, right? I think we always do a better job. I think, again, just part of it, so many times we, we get so busy doing things that we forget to tell you what it is we're doing, right? And in the absence of information, we make stuff up because we don't know, right? And so we wanna make sure we do a better job, so. This might be a good project, um maybe we can even couple it with city clerk's office, where we have a public records request that we can just tag in there, and so we have everything in one place. That'd be great. Dana, last one for you. Cut off.
Okay.
We have other people that have questions.
Mike, um so I would say that we, uh we are, I don't know. Uh when you uh discussed brought up about uh funds that kind of are no longer there. Um you mentioned the dollar, six million dollar amount. Is this gonna be any kind of investigation on that because I wanted to know why that, all your concerns of what was happening wasn't maybe brought up during the Alex Ray investigation? Um but then now we're, I was even ones who are paying for that short.
So Dana, I'll tell you if you'll allow us the time to look into that. Um that's something that.
Okay, well, it's been looking.
Yeah.
Okay, fine, you know, thank you.
Yes.
So um somebody asked if um five feet on the sea wall is the minimum, if you go higher, you sort of get higher. So if people started going higher at five feet, it's kind of up and down and down, what type of effect would that have?
Um Mike's the engineer. Uh but I'll give you, I'll give you the layman's answer, right? Because he gave us a good breakdown last night, and goes, because the question that came up, can you go higher? And yes, in a way you can go higher, but there's a limit to how much higher you can go, because every inch you add is additional weight, right? And at some point, in order to go higher, you have to go wider, right? And you're not gonna build a pyramid, right? So, so there is, I, I think ultimately from an engineering standpoint, there is gonna be a limit to just how high you can go. The point of the five-foot was to raise all the seawalls to a level where we're not getting water intrusion from, from the water side when we have high tides, right? It's not gonna help when you have an event like Naples had, and Sanibel had a year and a half, two years ago, right? We had fifteen feet of storm surge, right? But it, what it's designed to do is to make sure that we, over time, all the seawalls, right, we've got three thousand seawalls, four thousand somewhere, it's, it's, it's a lot of seawalls, and all need to come up over time. Because what, and for a time, you will have that, we call it the gap tooth effect, right? Where yours is lower, your neighbor's a little higher. Although the course of the next twenty years, as part of long-term resiliency, they'll all be at the five-foot level. I don't know that a lot of people are gonna raise them beyond that, it's not gonna make much difference, because again, you're trying to keep water intrusion. And the five-foot level is gonna prevent the vast majority of that.
So here are my.
Was that something that sort of?
You nailed it, but I just want, there's another issue, or no, of more. So in your twenty-twenty, when we began doing water press instead of just stormwater, uh we picked the planning horizon of somebody who just purchased a home on a thirty-year mortgage horizon, so, so it's twenty-twenty to twenty-fifty. If we're all, the studies I just showed you today are mostly focused, but we are looking at the year twenty-one hundred and a couple of other segments. And so there is going to be a point in time where somebody who's in our seat, uh in our branch, holding out on our homes, there's gonna be another conversation about five feet and more, and it, and it's gonna be about the existence of the island. Okay, but sea level rise is not pointing south. If you go through the sea level rise charts on the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration website, look at year twenty-one hundred, if they're gonna give you a house for your grandchildren, check that out first.
Right. We'll take two more questions, you have one, and then who that you have.
So I, I guess I wanted to talk about best practices, and
Right.
Um there's a couple of things that Treasure Island is doing that I think they're a little bit ahead of us. Um one of them is the sea wall thing, where we don't wanna create a bathtub in the backyard, and in Treasure Island, they have a plan where they are allowing people to fill behind their sea walls to facilitate everybody rising. Because the first, because the first thing when you say we can't backfill it and manage the water, then we're not gonna go out, because we don't wanna fence, the concrete fence in front of our view. Um the second thing was um fireworks on the beach. Um Treasure Island has been doing a tremendous job getting the word out, putting signs on the road, telling, not allowed on the beach for a variety of reasons. And I brought that up at the last beach stewardship meeting. And I was told that we're way high after police, and it's difficult because they have to catch them lighting them or something. And obviously, I didn't phrase my question well, because if we could get the word out to people like Treasure Island is, don't even do it, and, and ask the sheriff to manage it, I think we would be in a much better place. We see tremendous destruction of the fireworks on Fourth of July.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that there are some best practices um happening with our neighbors that we might be able to benefit from.
For sure. Yeah.
I think the July is the worst in all of the, you sure it used to be?
But nobody back, yeah, that's more of it, but the welliest doesn't actually. Um I might be asking a really dumb question here, because I just don't get this engineering stuff. So when I see, when we have a high tide, and the water isn't over the seawalls at all, but it's coming up through the drains and the streets are flooding, what is the plan for that? I mean, wh- wh- why does that happen? I've never seen that happen before.
Water shoots it off.
Right.
So normally, when the city would go, more water rains on the street, those are the pipe and the bed. Now they water has increased, and so the water can't flow down the channel it used to flow back to. So much, so much to the point where the bay water is forcing its way back up, right? Because the height of the water in the bay is higher than the elevation in the street. And so it's gonna help through the pipe and see the television, water will always find the television. So wherever the elevation in the bay is, that's the elevation the water's gonna try to find through the pipe system. So the plan is, you're gonna have to chase outward, every single pipe that has an outflow structure to the bay.
That's what you're saying, that something will be put in there and keep the come, coming out.
But it's structuring it, right?
Right, it's structuring it.
And, and saturation is certainly from the pipe, during, so. Um so we're looking at, we're answering, the answer is yes. Every single small water pipe is gonna have to be looked at in a priority sequence, more high check valve, out the box type of protection.
Well, that's what that, I think, when you share what that is. So even when I looked at our sea wall, and there was still a few feet to go, and it hadn't rained, our street was flooded.
Because it's straight, it's, so here's your sea wall, here's your street, and there's the water. So the water's gonna come through the pipe along the street, even though it's not coming over the sea.
So that can be fixed.
That can be fixed.
Well, see, I wasn't looking at all that.
All right, last one, and then we're gonna wrap it up.
So a few people talk about Treasure Island, and I'm sure there's other cities that have great ideas. It seems like from this meeting, the cities are thinking about things individually, have, have all the beach cities got together in the counties to maybe get all the great minds together to bring storm to help with something? Because like he did, instead of one engineering study, he did four, because he had more input. So I'm wondering, it sounds like maybe some other peoples have some other ideas, that maybe we should all work together, at least to get at it.
Yes. So I mean, I, I can tell you, the, the mayors all get together, just for the Bay Area Islands, also the mayors just for all of Pinellas. I know Mike gets together with the other uh public works directors, the city managers all get together. And so part of what you're seeing is, we're trying something in St. Pete Beach, and if it's working, we're gonna share it with the other cities and the rest of the county. The same way Treasure Island is trying something different, right? So we, we are getting some economy scale here, because we don't have to try all of the different options, but some of the different city managers and public works directors in a county are trying different things, right? So some of the, the out issues that we just talked about, flooding. That's an issue that we're experiencing, almost every city's experiencing. So now we're, we're trying to see if we can come up with a solution, somebody else is working a different solution. And then we'll compare notes at the end, but yes, that is something that is happening, where we are talking to each other, we are comparing notes. And then there is also, you know, for example, with the beach renourishment, you know, that's one of the things that you saw, where all the mayors got together. Not just, you know, you know, this whole county, but the rest of the counties and cities for them, right? And then we took it to our state representatives, we took it to our congress, we took it and we brought in the Army Corps of Engineers to have a conversation with us. If you wanna listen, but again, you know, we are doing things collectively, uh because then there's just gonna be strength in numbers. So yes, what, what you're saying is, it is happening, um usually on the, on the bigger scale projects. So um I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight, and we'll have a copy of this report as well, probably posted in the city YouTube channel or website. Um I'm gonna try to do one of these about once or quarter or so. Um so look for the next one, uh that's probably gonna be September, October. Um but again, just wanna make sure that we keep you updated, keep you in the loop on what we're working on, what the commission's working on, and just some of the, the future projects that are up on the horizon. So thank you all very much, and thank you for coming.